All right, we'll call the order. Grand Forks City Council meeting Monday, August 16th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Could we get a roll call, please? Marine?
Yes. Weigel?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavami? Cavami, are you on? Sandy? And Vean?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3 is Mayor's Announcements. We're going to skip that today with our combined meeting coming up. So let's move on to two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is proclamation, Ally Borgan Smile Wide Day.
And this one's pretty exciting, being the second year in here now. I remember this one from last year, so definitely excited to proclaim this again. Ally Borgan Smile Wide Day, September 5th, 2021, and in perpetuity, whereas Ally Borgan was diagnosed with leukemia at the age of 10 and ultimately lost her battle with a terrible disease, and whereas Ally and her mother Karen, her father Richard, and brother Dylan battled her disease as a family, as friends, and as role models, demonstrating the best of what people can be, and whereas Ally Borgan showed us as much courage as any one child or adult ever could in the 14 years, and gave as much care and love as someone with 80 or 90 years more to give, and whereas her generous nature could not be dotted, routinely redirecting compassion towards her brother and her family, showing she realized how much they loved her and letting them know how much she loved and appreciated everything they did for her, and whereas January of 2011, Ally, as Pippi Longstocking, and her father as an unforgettable Shrek, held a party for more than 1,000 friends, family, and community members to raise thousands of dollars for cancer research, but more importantly, spend a day celebrating, dancing, laughing, and enjoying each other, and whereas Ally proves that every person, no matter their age, has the ability to control their own attitude and can have lasting impact on people by treating them with dignity, compassion, strength, and strength of heart, and whereas our community is blessed to have had the opportunity to know Ally and carries her indelible reminder that despite the setbacks we face, despite the heartbreaks we sustain, and despite the losses we suffer, we must smile wide every day. Now therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of the City of Grand Forks, North Dakota, in memory of the courageous and generous spirit of Ally Borgan and in honor of the lessons she taught us about how to get the most out of each day and every day, do hereby proclaim September 5th in the year 2021 and in perpetuity as Smile Wide Day in the City of Grand Forks. All right, we'll move on to three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1 is the public hearing and resolution authorizing the issuance of RINVDOAnS on behalf of Ultru Health Systems.
All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing on item 3.1. Anybody here to speak on item 3.1 today? All right, public hearing is closed. We got a motion to approve from Councilmember Weigel, a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor? Hope you have further comment?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
I was wondering, do we have an update on when construction will be restarted at the Ultru?
Yeah, the tentative start date, well, planned start date is October 1st.
Dr. Weiger, could you?
Would you mind just walk up to the?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think you're all, or get on the spotlight. There you go.
As we've stated before, intended start date is October 1st.
October 1st.
I would say that at that time, prefabrication work will get started, as well as some work onsite as well. Some of the challenges we're facing is our steel allocation for the top two floors right now, but all systems are go and will be going in front of our investors in a couple weeks, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any further comment from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.1 carries unanimously.
3.2 is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance and final approval of Clarity Telecom LLC cable system franchise agreement.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing on 3.2. Our public hearing period is closed. Do we have any further comment or motions? Got a motion to approve from Councilmember Vean and a second from Mr. Weber. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.2 carries unanimously.
3.3 is public hearing and second reading ordinance to give final approval of request to amend the zoning map to rezone to include Columbia Park West Amendment 7 lots LM, NLP, and Q Block 1 Columbia Park 34th, 3 subdivision located 4,500 to 4,300 block of 36th Avenue South.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing for 3.3. Any comments? All right, 3.3, public hearing is closed. We get a motion from council. Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigel, a second from Ms. Doppler. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
3.4, public hearing and second reading ordinance to give final approval to request to include the Beacon PUD lot 2, Block 2, renewal re-subdivision number 5, located at 710 First Avenue North.
So, thank you. And Mr. Gostad, you have some comments for 3.6, but nothing on 3.4?
That's correct.
All right.
That's correct.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing on 3.4. All right, any further comments on 3.4? We'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Yep, okay. Please, Mr. Vean.
On 3.4, is signage as a part of this approval?
Councilmember Vean, it is.
It is. So what is it we are approving? I know the signage is dependent questions.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand what we are approving with this.
From a zoning standpoint, within the PUD, we're allowing for one special event sign, which is the video board that would be on the Doris Avenue, and it would be 10 by 20 is what we've discussed with them, which is consistent with the signs that the Alaris has on 42nd and the Ralph Engelstedt has on Columbia, the smaller of each of those systems. So we thought that's consistent with the special events signage.
Who manages what goes on in the sign?
I think that's part of the developer agreement, which would be covered under 3.6.
But for expedients, it will be city-owned and on-city land, and I believe it's, is it seven and a half seconds out of every 60 seconds will be allowed for the developer to have? But largely, I think it's going to be only to promote events, city events, and people that are actually on the premise, is that?
Yeah, overall, the sign would only be able to advertise things that go on within the property itself. I think the developer agreement will talk about, there's eight time slots over one minute. Every seven and a half seconds, it'll change over, so it'll be like a digital billboard that's out there, and one of the eight time slots will be for the developer to advertise tenants within their building, and the other seven of that minute will be used for special events.
You have something, Mr. Gostad?
Yeah. The answers and questions are spot on. It's the, that sign's going to be on, the way it sets up, is going to be on city-owned properties, going to be city-owned as it sets up right now. Any advertising has to be approved by the city council or the city, probably through administrative processes, and it'll be directed only towards either sponsor of an event or those that are located within the development itself.
Can you turn your mic on, Mr. Vean?
Thanks. Yeah, the concern I have is when you come up over the overpass, and that's going to be the sign that you will see when you come in, and it's kind of the welcoming to the whole downtown, because we spent a lot of money, and I think I'm pretty proud of what we've done under MERS, and this is going to be the gateway into the community, and my concern is, is this advertising for one area what we want to see from a citywide perspective? And how do we best manage the wording, whatever, the message we're trying to get across, which sometimes is bigger than just this events, those events going on at this location? And I like what we, I mean, it's interesting to compare them to the other venues, because they sit out just in front of their own, although, you know, Columbia Road has things on both sides, but you look at where Alaris Center is. So it raises a red flag for me, is what I'm saying, and I don't know if it does for anybody else, but I'm concerned about how we best identify ourselves to people that are coming in and through the community. And then maybe I could follow up, does that fall in line with, no, I guess I was looking at a different one? Okay, that's what my concern is, and have we had that discussion? Maybe that's the biggest thing. Maybe it makes perfect sense, but as a council, I don't know if we've talked about that.
Councilmember Vean, maybe, Ryan, what has been the conversation at planning and zoning regarding the sign and the appropriateness in this thoroughfare?
Yeah, I guess I'd say we had one or two people ask the question, but even some that were asking questions about the unit itself or the development, we had some that are supporters of additional signage in the downtown and some that aren't. So it's been all over the place, but for the most part, I think most people do realize that we are talking about something a little bit different. We have said that we're specifically linking this with our special events, so you have to have a public event space for this to be a part of that. So we're tying it with the size of that venue and those things as well, so trying to be consistent there as well.
So would we advertise for things like at the Town Square or the Greenway, other public events that might be Grand Forks-sponsored?
Well, you could potentially do that, but my thought was that we would be advertising what goes on within the Beacon itself and sponsors of the Beacon, just like the Alaris does on theirs, sponsors of the Alaris and the Ralph Engelstedt as well. And this will be something that offsets as well some of the monetary operating, so that'll be an assistance as well in terms of the sign.
Ms. Mock?
If we, if we approve this and it goes through, what happens if we start hearing from the public that it's too bright, or they don't appreciate the signage, or we get a bunch of complaints? Do we have an option to re-amend, or do we have an option to react to that? Because I think it's maybe a little bit bigger than we're used to and kind of a different standard for downtown, so I'm a little bit worried we might get a whole bunch of complaints in, and I'd just like to know if we have a recourse for reacting to that.
Mr. Brooks, I think Mr. Gostad can answer that from the.
That's great. I can't answer it. In the management agreement, it does, there is a provision that talks about light and noise plan, and that the manager is to submit a plan to the city for its review and approval, outlining the actions the manager will take to comply with applicable law, including city code relating to light and noise. So there is some approval process even, and I don't, it's not directed just to the sign, it's directed to lights and noise that might come from that particular event.
So if we had, you know, some sort of ongoing issue, would we have the recourse to take the sign back out, say that it just doesn't work for that area as part of our management? Or can?
I suppose you could, but you would have paid some money to install it at that point, and it would be, and it could be part of the bond amount that is issued, so, I mean, there may be issues in just removing the sign in total. And, I mean, there's private development, too, that's going to be utilizing the sign at least for seven and a half seconds per minute.
Oh. So with, I mean, some of these questions may be better for the management section, so I don't want to get into that, but like, would we at least have the recourse to change lighting requirements, or require it to be dimmer, or something like that?
I think that's the intention of that particular provision.
That particular part, okay. And that is something that we'll talk about later, but we'd have that kind of going forward to react to any issues.
Be part of the management agreement, and ultimately, that sign's going to be owned by the city under the development agreement, the way it sets up right now.
And all these signs have dimmers on them, they have the automatic dimmers, so if it is not, if it's too bright during daylight hours, there's something that needs to be fixed on the sign, and we'd have that taken care of, yeah.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Vice President Mock raises an interesting point, that this connects to the management agreement. In fact, items 3.4, 3.5, and 3.6, while I think I understand the need for them to be separate items with their own individual staff reports, they're deeply linked, and the good news is, we have so much going on in the city right now, that my council duties over the last few days have been quite busy, and I've not had the time to study all of these to the degree that I'd like. So I'm looking forward to this discussion. I have an unusual request. Normally, we take each item on its own, have a discussion and a vote, but because these are so inextricably linked, is it possible for us to have the discussion about 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and then come back and vote on them? Because, again, as Vice President Mock has just pointed out, the management agreement seems to me to be very important to 3.4.
Oh, you can ask Mr. Gostad. I know 3.5 is a different matter. 3.6, there's some state statute requirements that Mr. Gostad has to go through. How about, is it possible to open up the conversation, Mr. Gostad, in that way?
You'd have to have a motion to alter the agenda, to consider 3.6 at this point, because we, tonight is the night for the public hearing, and there's been invitations and advertising for tonight's public hearing, so we have to conduct the public hearing tonight.
Right, and it's a second reading, whereas 3.5 is a, yeah, you're right, 3.5 is a different matter altogether. 3.6, so I guess what I would need to do is make a motion to table this for the moment, adjust the agenda or alter the agenda so that we could discuss 3.6, and then come back to consider the second reading of 3.4. Would that be the process?
I think the process would be simply to.
You've got a simpler way? Great.
Yeah, just move to adjust the agenda to consider item 3.6 in advance of item 3.4.
I'd like to make that motion, if there's support for that.
Okay, we got a motion to move 3.6 ahead of, to adjust the agenda with 3.6 ahead of 3.4, and then we'd start talking on 3.6. Do we have a second for that motion?
I will second it. Just one question with that second. I know you, 3.7 is also tied to that. I don't know if you wanted to do that or not. For me, that's at the end, it doesn't matter, but.
Actually, those are the three items I was thinking of. I thought it was four, five, and six. It's four, six, and seven. You're absolutely right. So yes, I'd like to make my motion to amend the agenda to discuss 3.6 and 3.7 at this time, although it's primarily 3.6 that we're working on.
Yeah, maybe to keep it from being overly complicated, you want to stick with that original motion? I think 3.7 is a little bit more perfunctory than the rest?
Yeah.
If that works?
I'm fine with that, sure.
Okay, sounds good. We've got a motion and a second. Any further comment on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion is carries, so we'll move on to 3.1. We'll start with 3.6, and we'll get back to 3.4.
All right, so 3.6 then is the public hearing of application for tax increment financing final approval development agreement for Beacon by Epic with attachments A through G as listed.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Gostad, we're going to open the public hearing now, and turn it over to you, Mr. Gostad.
All right, thank you. Before comments through the public hearing, I thought I'd just briefly go through what it is that you're approving tonight. There is, you're approving your resolution. Let me make sure I got that. It's entitled Resolution of City Council of the City of Grand Forks Approving Renewal and Development Plan 2021-01, Tax Increment Finance District Number 2021-01, and Tax Increment Financing Development Agreement for Beacon Development Property. That's what you're approving, and there are four sections within that resolution. The first is, there are several findings of fact that we'd be asking you to make tonight. The second section is to approve the development plan. The third section is to approve the TIF district itself, and then the fourth is to approve the TIF and the development agreement. And I'll go through each one of them first. As far as section one, the various findings of fact, all of them are within or supported by the various staff reports that have been provided for this development, starting with the December 21st, 2020 staff report, February 1st, 2021 staff report, and then the August 16th, 2021 staff report that was just recently issued on Friday. If you believe that there are any factual findings within that, within section one that need to be modified or corrected, please let me know. They're your factual findings, city council factual findings, but again, all of them come from information or factual information within those staff reports. And they then would support the conclusions or the approval of the development plan, the TIF district, and the development agreement itself. Second item, second section is to approve the development plan, and that's actually attached as Exhibit 1 to that resolution. It's very topside as far as what the development plan calls for. It talks about, you know, the Beacon Development Property, it's the property at 71 First Avenue North, the old townhouse location is the property that all of this relates to. That development plan talks about land acquisition if necessary. It's not anticipated that to be the case. If there's rezoning, the city will go through the rezoning to the extent necessary for the development, that the development is consistent with the 2045 land use plan and the Grand Forks Renaissance zoning plan. It also describes the development goals, that what might be needed for the development to be successful, and also that the developer pays for these costs. This development plan is necessary to initiate the development agreement. We also, in order for the TIF to work, we have to have this development plan that is ultimately then submitted to the Department of Commerce. We need to do all those, have this plan in place before we can do the TIF district. The next is you're, with respect to the resolution, you're approving the TIF district itself. Again, it's the old townhouse property, and what you'd be approving is the TIF for 80% of the incremental value from the development. And so the original value of the property, which is now at about 2.2 million, will continue to be subject to property tax. In addition, 20% of the incremental value as a result of the development will also be subject to property tax. It's the 80% incremental value, from the value it is today to when it's fully developed, 80% of that would be then utilized to service the bond that we'll talk about in a second, All those costs, it also talks about the cost to the developer will reimburse those costs for the public plaza component of it. And there are limitations set out by statute as to what costs are reimbursable, and the TIF, the development agreement speaks to only those costs that fit within that statutory provision are allowed to be reimbursed. Couple of things that I have to provide as part of the public hearing that has to be provided to you by statute is the anticipated cost of the development to be reimbursed by the tax incentives. Right now, the total public plaza component of it, which includes the area where the sign is located, is roughly about $7.5 to $8 million. The way the agreement sets up, though, is there isn't a set price yet for what, the total amount that'll be reimbursed at Beacon, because we don't know what that is yet. It is the lower of two numbers, the lower of those costs that are allowable for reimbursement by statute, however, how much they pay for it, or the maximum amount of the bond that can be serviced by these tax increments. And I gave the, I gave an example, I think, in the, in the staff report. Right now, using a 4% interest rate, which we think is high, but we don't know where the bond rates are going to be, because we won't be issuing the bond until probably 2023. Right now, it looks like the increments can service about $6.5 million worth of public component, and so if, for example, the total costs for the public plaza are $7 million, but it's ultimately determined that the amount of the bond, the maximum amount of the bond that could be issued and still be serviced by the tax increments is only $6.5 million, it's the $6.5 million that gets reimbursed, whichever is lower between those two components. There are conditions to the payment, one of which is that we have to enter into a purchase agreement for that public plaza. It hasn't been created yet, but that's a condition for payment. There are all kinds of other conditions that are within the development agreement itself, like they haven't defaulted under the terms of the development agreement. Also, the bond, it's by statute is not an obligation of the city. That will then be presented, once we're in a position to determine what, when the public plaza is completed or near completion, we will be coming back to the city council to approve the issuance of the bond, whatever number that is. So for example, if the interest rates go down to a 2% amount, right, then the bond would go up, and it could increase the amount that could be reimbursed. If the interest rates go up beyond the 5% or 4% rate, then the amount that could be reimbursed would go down. That's the way it's set up, so we're protecting ourselves in the sense that it's only the amount that could be serviced through those tax increments, that that's the amount that we'd reimburse them, okay? The anticipated annual revenue from the tax increments to complete the project, there was a spreadsheet that was provided as part of the staff report, and if you take a look at, there's a column that says 80% of increment.
There were a lot, there were a lot of different pieces to the staff report. Can you direct us to that spreadsheet?
Yes, it would be referred to as the TIF Impact Analysis spreadsheet.
And that's F on the agenda.
Okay. And there's a column that, in that spreadsheet, that says 80% increment available for debt service. That's the amount, if you think of it in the context of, they're really applying the mill rate against that 80%, that incremental value, that 80% of incremental value. So it's, if you think of it in the context of, it's, the taxes are still going to be paid, except they're not going to be spread out amongst all the taxing entities, those dollars would be dedicated solely for purposes of servicing the bond. That's the amount in that column, that illustrates the amount that we would expect to receive from this 80% incremental value over the life of the project, and it accounts for increased in value, some inflationary increases in value as well. The anticipated date, and so the total amount over the course of the 25-year TIF is about $11.5 million, a little over that total is what would be available. The anticipated date when the plan will be completed, 2047 is the last date when those increments would be paid in, and then there'd be one last payment in 2048 because of the way the bond is usually set up. You can see in the early years, there is a little bit of a shortfall as far as what the increment brings in versus what the bond payment is going to be, but then over the course of several years, there's excess dollars that are received from the increment over the bond amount. Over the life of this TIF bond, it's about a $3,700 shortfall. So basically, you're square as far as that concerned. It's all going to be dependent upon what the values are. The estimate of dollars annually attributable to levies from each taxing entity, which will be credited to this tax increment fund, that fund that will be used to service the bond, those are in the columns in that TIF Impact Analysis spreadsheet that talks about the share of increment from the city, the county, the school, and the parks. That just breaks down that $11.5 million between the various entities. And so the city's amount is about $3.5 million, $3.58 million. The county is. The county is about 2.9. School share is about 3.7, and the park district share is about 3 point, or, excuse me, 1.4 million, roughly, rounding, total.
Mr., can we ask questions on this?
Absolutely.
That'll be the appropriate time to do that.
Mr. Green, please.
So, and this is helpful, because I've said, my biggest concern in all reality is, is I made copies of everything that's here, and there is so much information here that I've had a hard time grasping, getting my arms around it in a short period of time, because I, I think basically I saw it this weekend to have all the detail that we've got here, which I really appreciate the detail, but it's, it's created some questions in my mind. And if you look back, I think I have voted in favor of this throughout, but as we are getting to this point, we're getting into kind of the details of it, so I'm getting a greater understanding of the concepts, which I think we have approved to date. And I'm, I'm still generally in supportive, but it's probably raised a lot more questions for me that I thought are really fiduciary. We need to be able to answer all of that as we go forward. So I just want to start out with saying that that's part of what I'm trying to do, to have some, some concerns on that. So 80% of the, the amount available, that was 11.5 million dollars, right? So the whole TIF generates how much money, or?
You would, you would, the 80% additional value will generate 11 point, 11.6 million, 11.5.
80% of the additional, and the 20% goes where?
Goes, that still gets sprinkled to the taxing entities as, as they normally would get.
So we get the 20%, and that's based on what we originally would have received anyway?
Correct.
Is that, that's not the way that that, you would explain that?
If you take a look at the columns that talk about tax revenues, there's a column for city, county, school, and parks, that's the annual amount that each of them would receive based upon the original value plus the 20% incremental value. That's the property taxes that each of those entities would receive.
So, so now we have that 80%, which is 11.5, and where is that 11.5 going?
It's going to go to use to service that, the bond, the revenue bonds that would be issued.
And that'll be over 25 years.
Correct.
So that's the, the six, 6.5, well, roughly 6.5 million, depending upon the interest rate, because obviously if it's 2%, you don't have to pay as much interest, so it's principal plus interest on that 6.5. If the interest rate's two, then, I don't know what the calculation is, but it's probably closer to 7.5 or 8 million.
Correct, and the bond, the bond.
Because the interest, yeah. But if you look, I think, if you look at column for your 20, 2046 and 2047 is where you get that transition, where instead of the 20%, now you're getting the full increment.
Yeah, because I was looking at that, because then that on the, on the, well, you have 000 going across, and then you have the 462, right? 462,500?
Correct.
And then, and when you go to the estimated gap, does that go to a minus 46, 462?
It does in that particular year, because there's no revenues that are coming in from that, from that TIF, because you, your tax bill comes out at the end of the year, we won't collect it till the following year, but we have, all of those TIF collections will have occurred through 2047, but we'll have one more bond payment in 2048. So there are some positive numbers. Take a look at the estimated gap, those are actually amounts that are going to be sitting in the bank, so to speak, to help offset this last year's payment.
So the very bottom, you're, you got just a minus 3,006, whatever it is. So that's kind of how it balances at the very end, is basically that's close enough that, I mean, when you're looking at these kind of numbers?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, thanks.
All right. Respect to the, the development agreement, we did go through that and, and I thought in fairly good detail at the July 26th city, or committee of the whole meeting. Also, the staff report that was issued, pages two through five, provide, I think, fairly good oversight as to the various provisions of the, of the development agreement itself. What we provided to you are some modifications that have occurred since that date through the negotiations with the developer.
Which one is that?
I have E.
E?
On the agenda. Yeah, that's, that's the 30 pager, I think we talked about, maybe we did. And, and all I want to do is just, and that's why I only pointed out the, the red line changes. Most of them were grammatical or internal section reference changes that had to be made. A couple of them that I do want to point out to you, though, is the start date for the public plaza was anticipated to be this year. It's going to be delayed until June of 2022 with completion of July of 2023. Also, is, we've added the purchase agreement being a condition to any payment that would be made once the development is done. And the one thing I want to remind you of is that any payment to the developer for these, for the public plaza doesn't incur until the public plaza is done and two of the three buildings, there are certificates of occupancy, have been issued. At that point, we would, we would pay 2/3 of the public plaza cost. We'd still have that other 1/3 to pay. We don't make that payment until the third building is, is got a certificate of occupancy. The reason we set that up is to incentivize the developer to complete all three buildings before we, we complete the payment for the public plaza.
This, this is going to take a little while, so my apologies to everybody who's here tonight. Like, like Mr. Vian, I, I've been supportive of this project pretty much from the very beginning. Very excited, it happens in Ward 3, it sounds like it could be, I, I believe it very much could be a fantastic development for our community, even iconic, it could be one of the things we're known for. But this has morphed into something far beyond what, what I had originally understood in terms of the city's involvement. Instead of just a TIF to a developer, it feels like we, we are very much partners in this now. The, the approval that we received from the county, from the, the school district, and from the, I don't know, park district, did they get a say in this?
Council member, Weber, they approved this as a 20, up to 25-year tax incentive revenue bond at that 80-20 split. So that's what they approved. And then after we got through that, obviously, this, I, I think it's true to say, and I think we said in the staff report, we don't, well, we can't recall the last time if we did a revenue bond of this sort, right?
This is, this is unprecedented in recent times, yes.
It's unprecedented, but it's also unprecedented about, and it's attributed to the public event space itself, too. That's where the increment is going to, so that was always described as part of that, but now we're working through all the details, because the city's going to have to sell the bond, so we have a fiduciary responsibility. And then there's a management agreement of this particular piece, too. So if I could just, because I, so we don't hit a train crash here, I'm going to ask a question. We've got a school board that's going to come here at 6:30. So can we, I, I'm thinking on item 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, because I know there's going to be discussion on 3.5. Can we continue those public hearings to next week, Monday, and have a special city council meeting, and continue the public hearing and to the, and we could set it up before the committee of the whole, or after, whatever works best in that being, just because I know we're not gonna, we're not gonna, I, we have guests coming, so I don't want to, I don't want to be.
Are we tied to tonight with the public hearing being noticed in the way it is?
The public hearing, I think, we should allow the public hearing to be, if there are people that want to make comments, tonight would be the good time to, to make comments. If the, if you want to have a special committee or a city council meeting, then to consider the resolution and to approve the resolution, that would be my recommendation, is to allow the public hearing to be conducted and then table the matter for a special city council meeting to approve the resolution.
I've got, I guess I got one question for you before we go that route. You've spent months on this. Are you, are you comfortable that you've put enough in this to, to protect the city of Grand Forks and the people of Grand Forks to the best of the ability that you can? Because we can wait a week probably, and I don't know that that's going to change anything.
Yeah, it's, it, there are protections with respect to the collection of this, of these TIF dollars, because that's really what it gets down to, is to assure that those, those tax increments are collected. There are protections. One is, we're getting a personal guarantee from the developers, so that if, for example, I don't, those, those tax increments that come in are, we only get $400,000, for example, but we have a $462,000 payment, we can pursue the guarantee on that $62,000 shortfall. We also have the ability to specially assess that $62,000 amount. So there are protections that, that are in play, and you could cancel this at any time if there is that type of default.
With, with all due respect, there's larger issues, there's additional issues here for me as well, that we would suddenly become an event, an event planner, or at least a partner in event planning in a way that seems like it would be in competition with ourselves. And I don't know that that's even a bad thing, but there, it isn't just the fiduciary responsibility here. There's a, there's a lot, there's a lot happening with this that I do not currently understand. If we go ahead with the public hearing tonight, does that mean that next week is our second reading, and that's the final bite at the apple that we get?
It, there really isn't a second reading. What you're doing is you're approving a resolution, which then has implications, because that resolution, you'd be approving the, the TIF district and the development agreement, is what you'd be approving. The public hearing is to permit those that may have an interest to make comment about those, those items.
Would there be an obligation at this special meeting for us to, to make a decision up or down at that point?
I think at some point, you're going to have to make a decision.
Yes, but is that obligation next week?
I don't know if you'd, you'd have to set it up for next week, but you could set it up for a special city council meeting if you felt the need. I know that the developer is waiting, they want to start the development of the buildings this fall yet, so there is some urgency, I suspect, on the developer's standpoint.
I, I appreciate that. I think having a little extra time would clear up a lot of questions we may have. If we're going to do it, we want it to be successful. I mean, that, that's the bottom line. And, and what does that success look like? And what's it going to take to do that? You know, like you say, if there are shortfalls, we're going to be at less if there's, you know, TIF money is available. We want to make sure that we, we know what we're getting into and that it's successful. So I see this as both ways. This isn't just a negative. It's, it can be as much a positive to make sure that we have the full understanding of what we're trying to do, and maybe ask some questions, because I'm a little bit interested in how, how it's set up. What's the business plan look like? How are we going to handle profits and losses and, and all of that that's on an operational basis? Because in the past, I wouldn't have worried about it, because it belonged to the developer. Now it's partial, it's us. So how do we, we're setting up to me a, a whole entity here now that's at a different level than, than I perceive we've been in the past. So that's, that's part of what I'd like to be able to, to myself understand better, where we have more time.
I, I would encourage you then to read the management agreement?
Yeah.
Because it deals with all of those issues.
Yeah, and I have, but that's where I like a little explanation.
Dan, if you could help, so I think on all of these, what I hear is on, at least on 3, 4, 6, and 7, we should open and close the public hearing?
Yes, we should.
And then, and then come back at a future city council meeting and discuss those component parts in detail as, as part of final city council approval.
For the city council discussion.
Correct. So I, I think if we can move past the public hearing portion, and then we will bring that back at, at a near-term city council.
Do we need a motion for that, actually, or can we just open the public hearing?
I think what you do is, you, we're, we're in the midst of the public hearing right now.
Well, yeah, we've, we've opened and closed the, the public hearing for 3.4. Right now, we have 3.6 open. So at this point, unless there's any further comments on 3.6.
I don't think we've talked about 3.4.
We didn't open the public hearing for 3.4, we moved on to 3.6 before we opened and closed it.
I think we opened and closed 3.4, and then we began discussing it, and then put 3.6 in front of it, so I think that would, so I would say that 3.4 has had a public hearing, so.
Yeah, and, and the way I understood it is, the 3.6 public hearing, it was opened, I provided comments, and now if there's anybody else that wants to make comments, I would recommend that they be allowed to do so.
Any further comments on 3.6 at this time? All right, the public hearing's closed for 3.6. So what would be, I guess what would be the next, now, we would just move on to the next agenda item and come back with, or do we need a motion?
We need a motion to, to postpone the decision on the resolution, that's item 3.6.
Would we cable it till the next meeting?
I'd, I'd postpone it. A motion to postpone.
I'll make that motion.
So we look, right now, would we look at a motion to postpone item 3.4, 3.1, let's, do we want to do the public hearing on 3.7 first, or we want, wishing to postpone that as well?
That's fine.
All right, I'm, just, as the chair here, I'm just going to move on to 3.7. Can we open the public hearing on 3.7? And we're going to, anybody want to speak on 3.7?
I can read it.
Let's read it in, yeah.
So everybody knows, public, so 3.7 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance to men, chapter 14 of the city code, Grand Forks Business District, to include the Beacon by Epic into the municipal parking system, the downtown parking assessment area.
All right, now we'll open the public hearing on 3.7. Our public hearing period is closed, so now I'd be looking for a motion to postpone 3.4, 3.6, and 3.7, to a late, a later date, do we want to set a date?
I might make a motion just to postpone.
Okay. And then administratively, we can set a date and work with you in between. Okay.
Good.
We've got a motion, and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, so those motions have carried.
And then I think we're back to 3.5, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to get final approval to request to include North Congressional PUD Concert Development Plan Amendment Number 3, located in the 800 Block of Thames Court.
All right, thank you. We're going to open the public hearing, or did you want to speak first, Mr. Brooks? But it's, that can all be, as part of a public hearing, so go ahead and.
I'm going to be very brief, because I, I know Zach from Mac Construction and Mark are going to probably do a quick PowerPoint, and they're going to cover a lot of the items. So I just want to give you a real quick, brief, it's a rezoning. I do know that we need a super majority tonight for rezoning items, and I'll kind of turn it over to them to talk about the development in the interest of time.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. How we all doing? I'm, I'm Mark, I own Mac Construction in town. We, we're up in Thames Crossing, it's a Thames Court, it's a development on the north end, we're by the new Walmart, and we're, we're looking at adding a couple 8plex units, and so, it's backwards. I might get this figured out. Here we go. Okay, so the location, you can kind of see the university down there, we're up basically just directly southeast of the new Walmart location. Kind of got a vicinity map on the, on the lots, we're looking to vacate the property lines, and then just add in two 8plexes. It's kind of a funky parcel there, with some very narrow lots, up to some bigger ones. So we're, we're looking at a couple 8plexes, these are two 8plex units, 16 units total. It's about an acre of land up here, and most of the development we've done up there is all just nicer, nicer completed units. Really, just, our whole goal with the development was, it was kind of my first development I wanted to take on, I really wanted to make it nice and create some affordable living for people up there. And so a lot of, a lot of the buildings we've built before are about 200,000 to 230,000 dollars, and gives you a couple thousand square feet. And so with this parcel, we wanted to combine it, just because it was hard to meet the standards, to make duplexes work up there financially. So the, I'll kind of get into that, I'm kind of skipping ahead. But we, we had some issues that came up in planning and zoning, so these were the three main issues, and these are the main, main things I want to talk about today. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. So basically, density was the main issue. We had increasing the density from 10 lots to 16 units, two 8plexes. Also a traffic concern, and then they also were concerned with some rentals up there. So basically, with density, are, are we kind of looking at it in a different way here, but we wanted to show that two 8plex buildings on the left there, you have eight three-bed units and eight two-bed units, total of 40 beds in this, bedrooms. And if we were to do five duplex or 10 units total, they're all four-bedroom units, so it'd be 40 beds. So we're actually equalling about the same density per bedroom as we would here, so. So we're actually equalling about the same density per bedroom as we would here, so. The next thing was traffic flow. So, so in reality, we're trying to improve the traffic flow here. That was one concern with us. I know the neighbor in 5291 here had a concern with some of the traffic flow and looks, and so in reality, we would just push all the garages back to the east side towards this property, and all those, all those cars would enter just on that east side. So now we've kind of diverted traffic both ways with back-to-back townhomes to kind of make a more even traffic flow. And also, he's not just looking at garages now from his deck, which faces west. He has a nice, nice complex to look at. And then also rentals. So we have professional management on this. This is an in-house company that we, that we obtained, and we have actually a site manager that will be on-site in this property. Really, Mac Construction, you've probably seen our cars or something of us. We like nice things. I like to keep things nice, and it's really something, one of our core values. So, I mean, we want to keep the property looking its best. We, we're going to fill it with the right tenants. And I mean, that's, we do sod yards over there, LP siding, you know, things that you typically want to see on all rentals. So rental rates, of course, are in a little bit of the higher range, so you can see the tenants we're looking for. We attract military, med or aviation students, younger families kind of to that area. So we're, our main goal is to improve this area, and that's, that's our sole focus. So here, it just kind of shows what we've been building over there and kind of the quality that we've done in the past. So, and this is basically the last parcel within this. So why are we doing it? Financially, this, so building duplexes, of course, cost of building is up. Everyone, as a builder, is looking for help. Financially, it just doesn't make sense to build duplexes, and it just becomes unaffordable for, for people to really, we're getting up in the 280, 280,000 for a duplex side. And it just doesn't financially make sense or for us as a developer to take that kind of risk, just because I think the market, market is hot, but it's going to flip at some point. And so I just, it just doesn't financially make sense for us to take that kind of risk right now. And to be honest, in the north end, people want more affordability, and we try to do that, but there's a stronger rental market than there is a sale market. If you're not in those affordable 200 to 230, that seems like the sweet spot, and we really can't hit that anymore. So it's challenging also to re-plot this parcel. It's a, it's an odd shape. It's both, there's curves on both sides of the property, and it gets awkward on layout. Even if we were to re-plot and try to get duplexes in there, they're really, they're really in there pretty tight. And then to finish development, we want to, we want to match what we've built over there. We felt like we've done something different with the north end, and we want to, we want to keep a really nice outlook on what, on what we have and finish that development on nicely. So we, I mean, we've thought about the better traffic flow coming out the both sides, the east and the west sides of the property, keep a really nice look for the whole, the whole area. We want to keep property values up, and we're going to do these very nicely, just as what we've built over there. It's just more functional. So I guess to close, I guess, this is one of my first developments and one of my, you know, first areas I've taken on in Grand Forks, and we wanted to, we wanted to, we bought these from some investors from Vegas, and we, we wanted to improve these areas. It was kind of a broken area when we bought it. There was modular homes in there and some foundations and things. So we've, we've actually bought lots and removed the foundations up there. I mean, we've done everything we can to make that area the best it can be. I've actually lived in this community, right near this community from '08 to 2010, and always known as a family community up in that congressional area. The R3 zone, which is actually zoned for this, it's, it's a, per acre, you're supposed to be able to allow 16 units, but when the city sold this off, it never, none of the PDGs got changed, so it says it's only down to 8.3. But typically, an R3 zoning will allow 16 units. If there's more technical information, ask Ryan. But I've also met Mr. Weigle over there, and kind of, you kind of get a feel for the property and kind of what we're doing over there. And like I said, it's all about feel, and really, we're just trying to improve the neighborhood and help everyone. So I guess, help myself, the developer, and the people who live in the neighborhood, bring a beautiful project to Thames Court to complete the development. We believe this suits the neighborhood well and works best for this odd parcel. We went over why the density is not changing, not changing in reality from, because 40 beds is equaling 40 beds. Also, how the traffic will improve in both directions and how the property will be fully landscaped, sod yards, LP siding, nice properties, professionally managed with great tenants. My goal is to improve the citizen's property value around it and bring the tenants to the, and bring great tenants to the neighborhood. There's been a lot of thought and went into this project, and we've spent some money getting renderings and having the community on our side. So I'm asking council for a super majority vote tonight to support this project in Thames Court, and I hope to keep improving the north end. So I'm asking for super majority vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. All right, before we ask, if you're available for questions, too, I just wanted to make this open first. Before that, if there was some of them that wanted to speak that was from the neighborhood or anybody that wanted to speak against it, so I guess at this time, we'd have the floor open for anybody that, got anybody in the stands?
On that point, Mayor, we did receive both. Four, four letters of support, actually, from the neighborhood. We don't always get those. Usually, support is silent. So they did have a neighborhood meeting, received support there. We had one caller at P&amp;Z that kind of, he wasn't necessarily in favor, but I think some of his points are kind of countered by what was said earlier, so.
All right.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, I was.
Can't wait till.
Yeah, Mr. Weigle, if you wanted to go first, I know that's in your ward.
I'll be brief. For so long, I hear us talk about infill development. And since I moved into my house in 2016, I was born and raised on the north end. I've lived on the north end my entire life, and it's great to see development on the north end. It's great to see infill development on the north end. I remember when this project started and where it's come to now. Many of these units are already sold. They're popular, especially for our people that are serving in our air force at the air force base. To me, this makes sense. I'd hate to see it where it continues to sit out a lot for the next couple of years until maybe a market does this or does that. I think it's a great project, and I'm glad to see somebody taking the opportunity to develop on the north end. One of my first concerns was people, when they talk about rentals, well, the yard's not upkept, the snow's never shoveled. Some of these issues I brought when I, when I met with them, and they took care of those concerns, saying, we're taking care of the lawn, we're taking care of the snow. That will not be an issue with these properties. So I think it's a great development on the north end, and I hope my fellow council members will see the same.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. I'm going to just do a piece of housekeeping there. We're going to close the public hearing now, but continue the conversation. Mr. Vean?
If you could go back to the map that kind of showed where the traffic was and...
I'm going to try and not, I was going in the right direction.
Yeah, so I tried to look at it on Google Earth, but I can't tell which properties are already filled and which are built on and which ones are not.
We bought basically everything, 998 to kind of the, above our project there, it's the only one that they don't, but everything else is built. Last five blocks is built right up on the top.
So below that, you know, you're kind of on the curve coming down, is it, you have...
Yeah, you do. I guess you can kind of see, yeah. So this is the last gap that fills in the whole thing?
Correct. So it'll finish off the, a lot of the community supporters, man, they don't want construction. We're hoping to start responding to this call, too. See a lot this next spring, so.
All right, any other further questions or comments?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Got a second from Mr. Vean. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move now to four action items. Administration didn't have any, we were on the poll. Was there any that council members wanted to poll tonight? Ms. Dockler?
4.8, please.
4.8. All right, any others? All right, so on the consent agenda, we will move to approve 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, and 4.9. Got a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion from Councilmember Weber.
A second.
And a second from, was that Ms. Dockler?
Yes.
And a second from Ms. Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. All right, 4.8. Could you, Mr. Brooks, give us a little background on 4.8?
I'll read it real quick, just so I have it in the record. Re-plant fast track of Lot 2, Block 1, Grand Cities Mall re-subdivision located at 1726 South West Street.
Thank you. Yeah, this one's a pretty simple replat. They're just splitting up the property so that it can be sold to hopeful beginnings as, as we understand it, the daycare at the Grand Cities Mall.
Okay, Ms. Dockler?
So I guess my question is, is there a five-year plan, a more immediate plan for expanding the daycare, or is this in preparation for 10, 20 years down the road? I'm just wondering about what the plans are for it.
Yeah, I, those haven't been shared with us. I know they're working through building inspections on doing some interior remodels of that, but I don't know, you know, if they're getting bigger, if they're having more openings as part of this, but we can certainly get that answer for you. I just, I just don't have those details off the top of my head.
I'd also be interested in what incentives it is that they were looking at because that was noted in the, in the report.
Yep. And I know daycares, once they do own property or, or any, anybody, they, they would be eligible for potentially some different incentives. But to my knowledge, they haven't worked with any in our office yet, but we can certainly, I'll do some checking on the community development side.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments on 4.8? Got a motion to approve from Mr. Kavami. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Dockler. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.8 carries unanimously. All right, we're on to five information items.
5.1 is the statement of changes in cash balance as of June 30th.
Thank you.
5.2, investment portfolio summary as of July 31st.
Thank you.
And then 5.3, COVID-19 update.
All right, thank you.
And 5.4, opioid litigation update.
All right, we talked about possibly, did you want to postpone that one and get back to it, or there may be a deadline we need to meet, so we might have to just get into it.
I think we have to get into the opioid, and what we do, ask you to do is go into an executive session if we could.
All right, so if I get a motion, basically looking for a motion to convene executive session, and this is to discuss and get attorney consultation regarding...